Welcome to today's city council meeting, today Monday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, council member Casey.
Present.
District two, council member Vera.
Yeah.
District four, council member Martinez.
Present.
District three, vice mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Today, we have an invocation by Tim Giannosa, Big Valley Grace Community Church. And I believe he's supposed to be here in person, but do we not see him? Okay. As he will not be joining us online either, right? Okay. Would any of the council members like to volunteer to do the invocation? Well, it's going to go ahead.
Thank you. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for tonight and the opportunity to come together, together. Work together on these solutions for series. Please bless everyone here, everyone in the city and everyone present and help us make the right decisions moving forward. In Jesus' name I pray and I thank you for everything in the wisdom and guidance you're going to give us tonight. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Citizens Communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meeting, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda. Unless it's determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. And when wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. And we will begin with in-person comments. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to comment?
Dave Pratt, a series. I'm back to talk about the dog park again. And I realize the city doesn't go by its rules, but I would like you guys to open the dog park earlier than seven o'clock. Because it with the sun, the heat now. It only limits a couple hours that people can take their dogs over there for the park because then it's too hot for the pets. Thank you.
City manager, is that a possibility to change hours?
We can look into it, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next person, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, John Warren from the city of series. I have a question regarding the intersection of brooding and Knights Street. Council some time ago authorized a engineering study to take place for that intersection. To determine a stop sign on all four corners rather than just two. Also over on Third Street near the, or the Whitmore Park. Or people crossing there or events that take place because of traffic, I believe on North Street. That was the intersection that was mentioned. And a study was authorized, but I haven't seen or heard anything and I've asked several questions. Not received any responses, so I thought I would ask tonight what the status of that study is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, Vice Mayor.
I spoke with Sam recently, probably a week and a half ago. And it's been put out for some. Some bids on what it would cost to do it. That's my best recollection with my conversation, so it's still in the process because I was wondering those same questions and I know Daniel had that same question too. So as far as I know, unless somebody else has more information, that's where we're at.
Thank you. I get and receive all the bids and nothing that I remember has popped up regarding that. It's gone out to bid, but thank you for the information.
Anyone else?
Yankly series. Think I asked this question in the last meeting. That was addressed towards Chief Perry. Have they got the funding yet for traffic? Or is there a tentative time period, one is expected to come in so we can start after this severe traffic problem we got in our city too? Can you answer that?
Chief, do you? Could you please clarify? You asked the question last meeting in regards to?
I believe it's the last council meeting I had asked. Address Chief Perry and not so much the city council itself about some funding he had mentioned in the past. Not so distant past, he's going to get some funding or grant money or something so we could commandeer the problem we have here in town with the traffic signals and stuff like that and people running, I mean. Like I addressed at that point, the rest of the council about safety and people that live here in other communities, the same thing, it's massive, it's all over the place, we need to put a dent in it.
So we are currently pursuing a grant with the Office of Traffic Safety. Primarily, it's for DUI enforcement, so it will allow our officers to work overtime shifts combating DUIs. A lot of times with that though comes other violations, things like running a stop sign and then we pull them over and fire running or whatever. We've also been pretty active with our site team. I'm not sure if you were aware, but they just in town last week. They wrote a hundred forty-six citations during the morning hours.
I did see the first ticket on the anchor.
So we're tapping into those resources as well. As it relates to extra money to fund additional traffic officers, we do not have that at the time being, no.
Oh, this is just going to be for alcoholics or drunk drivers.
Yeah, the grant we're pursuing right now is primarily for DUI enforcement.
Is my understanding that there will never be any patrol cars out there for traffic stops.
Well, I mean, we have our few traffic officers that we currently have.
Motor.
And then we have, you know, our regular officers on. Going to calls and observe, you know, traffic violations, they thought violators as well.
Do you hear from citizens of this? Having probably got with society?
Yeah, every day. I mean, traffic's an issue in every city, you know, not just our city.
Oh, no, it's ours. Well, we only live here, so.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. No, we get, we get traffic complaints every day.
So is there any other bonds or grants that can pinpoint that kind of spot to where you can get money?
Yeah, sometimes, and we've had them in the past and we're always looking for them, so it just depends on what they're offering. But the Office of Traffic Safety is the primary grant funding source when it comes to traffic violations. They will sometimes open grants for specifically for like red light violators, we've gotten those before, or for distracted driving. We've gotten those grants before as well, so in other words, like cellphone, you know, click it or tick it, seatbelt one that they offer. So when they open them up for those, we usually put in for those.
There's no way from year to year that they're coming about.
Yeah, it just depends when the grant season opens of what they offer.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Yankly. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Good afternoon, city of series, Justin Farkas, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis, just coming by to provide you all with a brief legislative update, some of the work and efforts of Assemblyman Alanis and his time throughout the legislature so far this year. So as I've let you folks know in the past, we introduced twenty-six bills as part of a comprehensive legislative package regarding myriad of issues pertinent to our constituents and of course to the assembly who feels that these initiatives will help better our community. So of those twenty-six bills, I'm happy to report fifteen of them have been passed from the assembly over to the senate. We're actually, and not that we're counting, but we actually are in first place in terms of legislators for the most legislation passed from one house to the other, so it's a very big success. We're covering a myriad of issues, as I mentioned. Most prominently, issues in public safety, education, agriculture and affordability. Couple of those bills in specific, actually one has already made its way to the governor's desk. This is going to be Assembly Bill eighteen seventy-one, and this adds a financial literacy course requirement for students in grades seven through twelve for graduation, so we're really excited to move that forward to the governor, hope to see his signature on the bill sometime soon and provide those type of courses to our young people who have to go on and be successful citizens in our communities. We've also been dealing with other issues like healthcare, one bill that we passed provides greater accessibility on prescription labels for the blind or hard and seeing. And so we've been touching on myriad of issues I mentioned. Want to thank Councilman Daniel Martinez for the introduction at a couple of weeks back at the concert in the park. Thank you for showing our office that love and support. We've been having a great time out there, getting to know our constituents, seeing what the city of series is up to and supporting local vendors and bands. So thank you very much for your time and I will be around for the meeting for any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience? Seeing none? Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay. Public period is now closed. Moving on, is there any conflicts of interest by the council? Seeing none? Moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature. It will be acted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff we acted and accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there any council members that would like to pull an item? Council member Vera.
Item nine and I mean twenty-two, sorry.
Twenty-two is not on consent. Consent calendar ends at sixteen.
Sorry. Yeah, just those.
Nine to ten.
Just to confirm, Mr. Mayor, nine and ten?
Yeah, but let's go to the audience. Anybody in the audience that would like to pull an item on the consent calendar? Yes, sir. Please step up to the podium.
Number seven.
Number seven? Okay, anybody else?
Dave Pratt, a series, number nine.
Number nine, okay, number nine is on the list.
Yes, whenever councilmen are usually old, one of those, you don't always go to the audience, see if anybody has any questions on the same one, that's reason why. Thank you.
No worries. Next person, Warren.
John Warren, city of series, item number thirteen, item number fourteen, item number fifteen, item number sixteen.
Thank you very much. Okay, go back to council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve items one through six, eight, eleven and twelve with a consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
First item pulled is item number seven. Who was that? Was that you, council member, or was that one of you gentlemen? Mr. Yankly, come on. You're up, sir.
Just want to get some information on this. I did read the portion that staff report that covers item number seven. And three-year contract, don't we have a contract with them already? Is this a renewal? I can't remember. It's a, it's a new contract?
It's a renewal.
Okay, so again, in there, there's nothing that I could read and I definitely couldn't find out where we did it three years ago. Where's this money going to? Is it going to go to a general fund or does it, well, it's already been done, but is it in the general fund? Can this money be used for the police department? Or it gets distributed everywhere? I mean, the police department's doing most of the work. The same time, time has passed and there's a discrepancy on dispatchers. Is this going to put an overload on the dispatchers? And what I heard that some of them take training for quite a while before they can, I guess, be on their own, I don't know. And kind of concerned about that. Are they going to get a pay increase because of this new contract for dispatchers? I don't know. I hope it doesn't go all to the general fund. I mean, it should go through the police department for all the work they're doing for Newman, for ourselves. And those poor dispatchers, they must be going and running around like rats. They probably can't even get out of their seat because they got to take all those calls. But yeah, pretty much, I just wanted to know about where the money's going. And are they going to be able to hire some more dispatchers with that money? I don't know what the increase was from the last contract to this one. Or if in the past they even used any of that money contracted with Newman towards dispatch or other parts of the police department. Again, there's three departments in the city that need to be taken care of first before anything. Police, fire and code enforcement. If we tackled those three departments, we would have a lot less problems than we have today. And the other things that come up, take them one at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments or questions on item number seven? Bring this added back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number seven of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
No.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Moving on to item number nine. Council member Vera, was this one yours?
It is. Did you?
Yes, any members of the public would like to comment on item number nine?
Dave Pratt, a series. Every now and then, the traffic study is brought up and we're not, the only thing we could get out of this is more traffic lights and more congestion. And more speeders through neighborhoods, try to get around all these lights that don't match up. And they're going to do surveys, are they going to do the surveys during the winter time when the school's in, when the traffic is really bad? Or during the summertime when the, when the traffic is light most of the day? I find during the winter time, freeway, the ninety-nine is just as bad during these particular hours like like trying to get to Modesto in the morning. You don't dare take the, take ninety-nine because traffic's usually backed up from seven, from seven to ten o'clock. And then in the evening, it's backed up going the other direction. So are they? I hope you do, they do a better job this time. We really need to get get, get these lights times to get rid of the traffic, traffic that keeps backing up during these particular hours. Thank you.
Mr. Beltran. What would be the answer to that question? About timing?
So this will, we are looking at re-timing all of the signals within, within the city. And we do them generally during the morning peak hour, the lunch peak hour and the afternoon peak hour. So when, when we do that, there are, there are adjustments that they, that they do make for, you know, school time. Those types of things, those are, those are all taken into account when we do this.
Thank you very much. Bring this back to the council member.
I think David touched on a lot of what my concerns was. I just wanted to confirm, it was like all of the lights and not just, it's on there, it just said like Mitchell Hatch and Whitmore, I just wanted to make sure it was going to be maybe the area south of service on Mitchell. That's kind of thinking because that is still kind of serious, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't starting afterwards. And then like Pratt had mentioned as well, is the school time because school does get a little congested everywhere and we've seen traffic back up from Central on Service Road all the way past the new Walmart. So it's going over a mile in the mornings. I just want to make sure we can find a way hopefully to try to relieve some of the congestion as well. I know we're having a similar situation in front of series school. And those were my questions as well. I'm just making sure that we were addressing all of the areas.
Council member, so we are timing all of the, re-timing the lights in all of the city. Not just, I think when, when it comes to Hatch, Service, Mitchell, those are actually synchronized corridors. So they're, they're actually talking differently to each other to actually move traffic through the city. And so we are, those will get synchronized with new timing. But all, all traffic signals will be timed within the city. If there are Caltrans signals, those will not get timed in with our, with our lights. Those are under the jurisdiction of Caltrans and we as the city cannot touch them. So that, the, the other thing that goes with this, when it, when you look at the schools is we are actually going to be able to in real time. If something gets really backed up, we can actually give our consultant a call, they can actually come into our system and adjust timing as needed. So that is something that, that we do have set up with this contract also so that we can, we can literally move traffic through the city if things get backed up. And obviously that takes a call, it takes a little bit of time, but we will, we will definitely tackle those on a one-on-one basis as they come in.
Thank you.
Okay, so basically I find even on Sunday when there's no traffic, trying to get from Whitmore to the, to ninety-nine is ridiculous. It's it gets to the point where I hate even driving Mitchell Road except have to, because I have to go to Modesto. But like a lot of other people would take faithful or take more road to get around most of the lights because even Sunday with no traffic, they're terrible.
Thank you. Any additional comments by the council on item number nine? Oh, go ahead, sir. You had a comment for number nine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Warren. Comment with Caltrans, okay? I think Caltrans will coordinate with the cities so traffic can be timed flow through their signal with the assistance of the engineer various cities. As you approach the Caltrans signals, we should not have red lights when they should be green so traffic can flow onto the ninety-nine corridor. That would be probably the hatch code in the Whitmore Road corridor that have Caltrans signals. I don't know of any on the rest of the city that would be involved in Caltrans. But we need to work with their engineer so traffic flows from our city and doesn't back up in our city. And I think that's their policy, but I'm thank you.
Mr. Beltran, do you have anything on that?
So yes, we will work with Caltrans. It's not that they won't work with us, they're actually very easy to work with. But as far as a synchronization, the way synchronization works is that our city mainframe, if you want to call it that, actually communicates with our signals. We, they will not let us actually communicate with their signals. So their signals do get off timing sometimes to our synchronization and so it does, it creates a backup. And we can call Caltrans and we can, we can work with them on that. But I just want to clarify that it's not about not working with Caltrans, it's we won't be able to actually synchronize their lights with our lights that we, we can look at their timing and we can, we can have them adjust timing. But as far as them being integrated into our traffic operations center, they won't allow integration to our traffic operations center.
Thank you very much. Bring this item back for council for a motion unless there's any other additional comments on item number nine. Mr. Martinez, I see that you have pushed your button, my apologies.
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let Mr. Beltran know that where he can let it's advanced mobility, know that the high schools also stagger their start times to later in the morning just so they could alleviate the traffic flow so that, that's something you'll make sure you let those professionals be aware of when they're doing their study. The, the two high schools start after nine in the morning instead of eight o'clock like they used to. And then with that, I'll make a motion to accept item number nine.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number ten. Council member Rose Linda, this is yours as well.
Yes, so this is regarding the playground equipment. During the public comments we had when we were going over the grant, we were meeting with the community. Some of the requests were for playground equipment or items for children without, that are autistic and or disabled. And so I was just wondering if any of these met any of the community requests.
A council, council member. So yes, the, for instance, we do have what they call, I'll name it off, it's called a spin with me, it's a, it's kind of a merry-go-round, if you will. But it isn't for inclusive play. It is at an accessible level and specifically so that you can transfer somebody from say a wheelchair over to it, it has extra back support, those types of things. The actual rope structures that we have are also inclusive. And then there are also instruments that are, that are for inclusive play also. So we've, we've tried to incorporate as much inclusive play as we can while a lot of the equipment will stay and may be adjusted. So that may not be inclusive, but the items that we are adding, there are quite a few of them that are for inclusive play.
I just wanted to make sure, I appreciate that because one of the requests I did see from when I was at the public meetings was to have the music or the drums and I saw you had the bongos on there. So it sounded like you met some of the requirements, long as we had a few, you know, accessible for everyone and I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Any members of the audience would like to make a comment on item number ten? Bring this back to council for comments and or emotion.
Make a motion to approve item number ten of the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item number thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, this is Mr. Warren, correct? All four, please step up to the podium. Yeah, we'll take one at a time, just want to make sure they stays for all four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, take them all four at once because my comments or my question, kind of a general thing, I understand that there are closed session meetings and, and things recently with the labor that are involved with these four employee group have come with a, with a solution, resolution and suggestion for a pay package for one year, not like a three-year package or a four-year one-year thing. And there was a percentage of raise that was in the staff report. And then of course, there's benefits with health longevity and some, some other issues. My question is, I've read the staff report. Nowhere in there was there a dollar figure on how much this was going to cost the city. Usually when you sit and have these types of negotiations, there's a dollar figure that says, hey, we want to give our employees a certain percentage of pay raise and it's going to cost this much. Going forward, it's going to cost this much. None of that information was there. The only information that I did find is that it's included in the budget already. That the payment or that the bargaining agreement, the funds for that are already in this budget, which of course has been passed. My question is, how much money is the city being, or going to have to fund each year for this agreement with these labor groups? Thank you very much.
Ms. Vasquez, do you have a rough idea what that number is or? Oh, sure, sure. I'm just asking her, it's just a
I don't have those figures with me at the moment. But I could get for you.
Mr. Warren, unfortunately she doesn't have the figures in hand, so she will go ahead and forward that information over to you.
Excuse me, but how can council vote on an issue when they don't know what the cost is and they won't make that cost known to the general public? I don't understand how that could take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any additional comments or questions on this item from the audience? Any additional comments or questions from the council and or looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items number thirteen through sixteen of the consent calendar.
Second. Unfortunately, we have to take them one at a time. Sorry, guys.
I, I spoke with Nubia. She said I could motion them.
No, is that, is that?
His questions were, were same question for all four items.
I actually missed the question. I thought it was something different. Because they're separate line items, either you group it all for public comment and you can motion it all together, or if you're going to allow more public comment, then we have to take one at a time.
Let's group all for, for all of them.
He, he had mentioned that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up again. Grouping thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, and I will bring you back to the public. Is there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen? Seeing none. Any members of the council would like to make a comment on thirteen, fourteen, fifteen or sixteen and or make a motion?
We can't motion it.
Motion is on the floor and a second.
There was a second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey.
Mr. Mayor, give me a chance to voice my opinion.
Sure, sure. Your, your button was impressed. So my apologies. Go ahead, sir.
Just going to explain why, why I'm voting the way I'm voting. Last, on the eighteenth, I asked, uh, instead of, do we pass a preliminary, uh, budget to be reviewed again in September to make sure that we had the funds in place? I was told no. We either pass the budget as is and then we can't make adjustments. So I, I want, I want you to understand I'm not against giving employees, hard-working employees, uh, compensation is needed, but I, I, I can't vote for it because again, on the eighteenth, I, I thought that we were going to vote. I mean, I understood that we had a public hearing and we were going to vote to approve the budget. And I asked, well, can we just make it a preliminary bu- budget and to be reviewed in September? I was told no. So that's why I'm voting no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Moving on to new business. Accepting the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Military Equipment Annual Report and approving the Military Equipment Funding Acquisition and Use Policy. Chief.
Uh, yes, this is, um, this is a staff report, um, that, uh, essentially just supports that our, our military, uh, equipment use that we have provided for us at the police department. Uh, we've had this for several years and it's a renewal report, uh, that we have to do annually, uh, per law for reporting now, um, to, to make it justified or legal to certain equipment at the police department that's deemed military use.
Thank you. Short and sweet. Uh, Vice Mayor Brett Silveira, you have a comment or question? No problem. I'll, I'll, we'll hold. Um, the public comment period is now open. Is there any one in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay. Public comment period is now closed. I will bring this item back to the council for discussion, questions and action. Vice Mayor, the floor is yours.
Molly's question, chief, is, is there any way we could, or any provisions written into this that we could approve a three-year, five-year or a, a thousand-year, um, resolution so we don't do this every year?
Not to my understanding, sir.
Unfort- unfortunately, the way the statute was written by the legislature requires an annual review.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from the council? Or, uh, bring this item back for a motion.
Move to approve number seventeen.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number eighteen. Reconsideration of the City Council's policy on the use of video teleconferencing such as Zoom for public participation at city council meetings. And this item goes to our city attorney, Nubia Ghosting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is a referral item that was previously requested by Vice Mayor Silveira for the council's consideration. The council remembers that back in twenty twenty-three, um, due to a series of Zoom bombings that occurred here particularly and around the state of California, uh, the city council, along with many jurisdictions around the state, took some proactive steps to, uh, restrict the use of teleconferencing technology such as Zoom for public meetings. And the council did have an agenda item. We discussed it and the decision was made to limit Zoom to only viewing purposes. So members of the public can still view the meeting online, but would not be able to provide public comment online unless the one exception is under state law. If a council member appears remotely for an list of enumerated reasons, then we have to open it up to the public for public comment as well. So that was the parameters that this council set at that time. Um, this item actually has a component that goes hand in hand with the, uh, subsequent agenda item for your consideration. And so what we're looking for tonight is direction on the council, from the council, on how you wish to amend that policy, if at all, based off of your decision that may have some implications on changing the handbook item and specifically the language about teleconferencing. More specifically to this item, um, one question that has arisen since that incident in fall of twenty twenty-three is, has there been any additional Zoom bombing events locally or regionally or even at the state level? It appears that after, I would say a subsequent, you know, few weeks of activity, intermittent activity in different jurisdictions around the state, it seems to have quieted down. Many jurisdictions around the state put in temporary measures, some of them last, uh, more permanent measures on restricting Zoom. And so again, at the request of Vice Mayor Silveira, we've placed this on the agenda for the council's consideration if you wish to make any changes to your policy. And I can answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start with the public comment. The public comment period is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Mr. Pratt.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. Yeah, I'd like to see, uh, like it come back, come back because a lot of times I'm, I go to my daughter and, and I'd like to make comments sometime. But lately in the news, uh, it seems like a lot of other councils is having bad behavior on Zoom and they don't know what, what, what they're going to do about it. So it's, it's kind of a toss-up. But if you do start getting comments or, and we started getting bad comments again, I guess all we can do is limit like you did before. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Councilmember John Warren, I would encourage you to return to, uh, Zoom meetings the way they were. So the public, uh, if they're unable to attend, they can make comments as well as listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. Was there any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay. We bring this item back to the council for any comments or questions and action. I do have three buttons pressed. I will start with Councilmember Vera. However you feel, however you feel.
I just want to make sure everyone, okay. Um, I just want to thank Brett One for bringing this back. I appreciate that. As a mother of four, I have a hard time, I had, they're now grown, um, a hard time coming to the session, to the meetings, whether it was work, whether it was having the children, whether it was outside meetings or travel. Um, I think it's important. And again, as, uh, Mr. Pratt had said, if the bad comments are not coming in, there's no need for it to suspend it. But if we do have this bad comments or we're having issues, then maybe we need to relook at it. But I'm very, very supportive of moving forward with back to the way we had it before. Thank you, Brett.
I'll go next.
Thank you very much.
And I'll let Brett go last.
Yeah, Brett wants to go last. Yes, that's fine.
We, we created this, uh, out of necessity to combat a, a group of individuals who were spreading hateful speech throughout our state. Um, those few individuals seem to have died down and not be creating as much havoc as they did initially. So I, I believe personally it's time we open it back up. We allow individuals the opportunity who, like Councilmember Vera said, can't make it in person, uh, the opportunity to speak. I, I know my wife watches at home and I know Mr. Casey's wife watches at home. Um, giving them an opportunity to, uh, give comment would be fantastic. So I also support that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for allowing this to get back on the agenda. Uh, things happen in our society and we have to move with it. Everything we do is fluid. That was a terrible time for a lot of people around the region and all, all over the place, actually. Um, luckily we haven't seen it happen much lately, if at all, at least in our area. Doing a little bit of research, um, there has been literally no recognizable Zoom bombing that we could, that I could find. And a lot of, um, municipalities that made the decisions that we made to shut it down are also doing what we're talking about tonight. And it seems like we have support for tonight. So I should appreciate it getting to this point and, and everybody's positive opinions on, on allowing our citizens to, to be a part of our process in which whatever way fits them, not necessarily us. So I obviously support this too. And thanks to my colleagues for, for readdressing this.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure, uh, Councilmember Casey, is there any comment that you'd like to make? Okay. No worries, sir. Okay. So I bring this item back for a motion.
Move to approve number eighteen on it.
And I'll second.
Uh, roll call, please.
And just to clarify, this is approving Zoom comments, future council meetings.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business. Adopting the amended City Council Rules and Procedures Handbook dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And this is for the city attorney. Give us a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, members of the council. So, uh, major update for this item now is that based off of the direction you just took, we do have a draft, um, handbook in here that's been redlined, uh, which includes language about the restricted use of Zoom. So based off of the direction we just got, then, um, is part of a potential motion after we go through the presentation, um, the request would be to include that as part of your motion so that we can make the change to this handbook as well. So a little bit of background on this, the council will recall, we've, we've had a couple of, uh, workshops, public workshops to go over the rules and procedures. This has been an ongoing project for several months now. The council's wanted to tackle the parameters of its own rules and procedures. Um, again, a reminder that these rules and procedures apply citywide. So it's not just to the city council, but it will apply to all of your appointed bodies such as your committees. Um, and, and so this will apply across the board. Some, uh, changes, I would say, I would say that there aren't significant structural changes to the handbook. A lot of it came about from best practices and updating some of the language. Uh, but we did, uh, include all of the changes in redline that were provided by the council at our previous, uh, pre- previous workshops. Again, I think to align best with, uh, current, uh, practices and I, issues that the council has identified that needed some, some revisions. So we can go through the changes, um, if you have any questions. But again, because it's been provided in redline, I wanted to give the council an opportunity to ask questions, um, so we can go through it. So I can answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the public. Public comment period is now open. Is there any members of the chambers who would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
I bring this item back. So the public period is now com- uh, closed. I bring this item back for the council for discussion, questions and or action. Is there any council members that have any questions or comments? Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, I, I know. I think he said, I just want to confirm should, um, an incident like the past happened with Zoom, the mayor or other council is a voting body with other opportunity to shut down telecommunication or meeting for temporary purposes? Could you explain who has that authority?
So the way that it was, it was tackled at the time is that due to the necessity of it, obviously literally at the meeting, a public comment was shut down. I think that revisiting that policy is probably necessary moving forward. The way that it's, um, this handbook is structured, it's basically all or nothing. And it really would be incumbent on the council to bring back or discussion unless you want to include something now in the handbook that says that in the event that there is another Zoom bombing incident, the council, you know, will authorize. But again, that becomes automatic. And I think for the exact reasons why we have the previous agenda item, it might be best to just have it on a case-by-case basis and have the council make a decision at that time. Again, it might depend on the severity of how it is. But again, I, I would recommend probably just leaving it for, in the event that it happens again, for the council to make a decision.
Thank you.
If there's no additional comments or questions, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number nineteen.
With, with the, with, with the inclusion of the direction from the previous agenda item.
With the inclusion of the previous agenda item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to public hearings. Item number twenty. Second reading and adoption of the ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Series admitting Title Fifteen, Building and Construction, Chapter Eight, California Fire Code of the Series Municipal Code to adopt the twenty twenty-two California Fire Code. Chief Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading, the ordinance of the Fire Code for the City of Series. Every two years, the Fire Code is adopted and each, each jurisdiction is to adopt the California Fire Code. Along with that, the city or jurisdiction is allowed to make amendments that are equal to or greater than the Fire Code. And this is the second reading of that Fire Code. If there's any questions, I can answer those for you.
Thank you very much, Chief, for that report. Uh, we'll go to the public. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Is there any emails?
There were no emails received.
Thank you very much. That public hearing is now closed. Moving over to the council, is there any discussion, questions and or actions? Seeing none.
Move to approve number twenty on the agenda.
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number twenty-one. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Series admitting Title Fifteen of the City of Series Municipal Code and adopting by reference the California Code Regulations Title Twenty-four, twenty twenty-two edition of the California Building Standards Codes and to set a public hearing on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four for a second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Um, I, please tell me how to pronounce your name again, because I don't want to mess it up.
Simbalakis.
Simbalakis. Oh, see, I got it right. I just wanted to make sure out of respect.
No problem.
This, this yours. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa Simbalakis, Community Development Director. This is a routine item that sorry about that. Last time I was holding it on the bottom and it cut out. So we'll try this way. The item is a routine matter that is slightly delayed and coming before you, similar to the item you just heard. This is an amendment to Title Fifteen of the Series Municipal Code with the exception to Chapter Eight, which is the Fight Code.
Somebody give her another microphone, please. I'm sorry. She's having no luck with the mic today.
Yep, here we go. Um, so it's an amendment to Title Fifteen of the Series Municipal Code with the exception of Chapter Eight, which was the item you just heard. Um, this ornament, ordinance will ultimately adopt by reference the twenty twenty-two California Building Standards Code and the California Code of Regulations, otherwise known as Title Twenty-four. Um, just for some background, the California Building Standards Commission is an entity within the California Consumer Services Agency that develops the California building standards that we abide by. that develops the California building standards that we abide by. The BSC publishes and adopts a new building code every three years. This twenty-two cycle was adopted on January first and became effective January first, twenty twenty-three. So we are a year behind in implementing the twenty twenty-two code, but better late than never. We are required to have our building official implement the twenty twenty-two code, whether we adopt it or not. The difference is, is that if we don't have an adopted ordinance by the council, we can't take any, kind of veil ourselves of any exceptions or amendments to the code. So we are recommending that we do adopt the twenty twenty-two code. We will have to do this again at the next cycle update, but we might as well get this adopted. So we are recommending tonight that you find the proposed ordinance exempt under provisions of SEQA and find that you I'll read it again to set the public hearing, right, for the adoption and the second reading of the adoption of the ordinance. July twenty-second.
Okay, thank you very much. First, we'll go to the public. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay, I bring this item back. The public period is now closed. Bringing this item back to the council for discussion, questions and/or action.
Make a motion to approve item number twenty-one of the consent calendar.
Second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item number twenty-two. Approving an agreement for turnkey design and construction energy services with the Schneider Electric Building Americas Incorporated for the design and construction of an energy service project for the City of Series Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements and upgrades and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And Doug, this one's yours. I'm sorry, sir. The names here are not pointing to your direction, but it's yours.
Good evening, council. So this is the agreement with Schneider Electric to essentially initiate the first phase, first phases of design for our upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. The agreement is for two point eight million dollars. And that will, that will take us, that will take us through design. And in the staff report is also a schedule that kind of lays out when we expect to have deliverables from the client or from the consultant. They'll be looking at grants. They'll be looking at, you know, all of the types of fundings as we move forward with this project. And then we'll enter into that design phase to get, to get this thing designed and hopefully get us on our own wastewater treatment plant for the entire city.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. And we'll bring this item back for council discussion, questions and actions. I do see Vice Mayor Silvera, he presses button first, then we'll go on to Ms. Rosalinda.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to Schneider Electronic, Electric Buildings for their their presentation to us. It was wonderful. I think they did a wonderful job explaining where we sit right now in this subject and where we need to be in the future. If things go well, we all know we're on the cusp of expanding our population tremendously in different parts of our city. Yet we have no ability to expand our wastewater treatment sewer or anything similar to that. So it's pretty obvious, at least to me, that we're at the point in time that we have to do something regarding this. My only question to them at the end was, who's going to pay for it? They did a pretty good sell job, which I don't believe it was a sell job. I think it was, it was the truth and I was appreciative of that. Explaining how we were going to pay for this with savings, more efficient systems, saving money that we're paying other cities except our water now. There was a gamut of different things, some grants, some low interest loans. I would like somebody to tell me right now where this two point eight million dollars initially is going to come from, just so that's on the table. I really never got to answer that question, but I don't know that I ever asked it that way. So I'm asking that now. But I just wanted to tell everybody how excited I am to look in the future of this subject, knowing what we did with SRWA and our inclusion in that and how beneficial that's been to our city. And this is just as exciting for our city and our growth potential moving forward. So that's just, I have a question and that's where's the two point eight million dollars coming from? So I'm sure somebody, Doug or somebody, can answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, council member. So the two point eight million will be coming from enterprise funds or sewer expansion funds, which is also known as your public facilities financing funds. So both of those accounts will be able to fund this project and we do have the funds for it.
And those funds are healthy enough to absorb this at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I believe Councilmember Rosalinda has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of tagging along. Ultimately, I'm assuming is this going to drain our enterprise funds and ultimately will it require possible rate increases? Especially if we are pulling a significant amount overall. I also understand the need for it because again, if we're actually not able to process it's like a million gallons per day sewage that we're having to have another city, we're actually having to ship to another city, it almost seems detrimental that we get this done quite quickly. So I do understand the need for that. But again, I just want to see what kind of effect is this going to have on the taxpayers ultimately? There's something that needs to be done anyways. And I think that's where the bottom line is. And I think that's kind of where Brett may have been going as well. Just where is that money really coming from and who is it going to affect?
Councilmember, so there's, there's going to be a myriad of options for essentially getting the money to finance this. Some of them are going to be through grants, some will be through obviously our local funds. And some may be through bonds, loans, things of that sort. Those are all, all options that, that we'll have to, you know, put on the table and, and that will obviously be the decision of this council and future councils to, to fund this project. So could it be put on somewhat on to upper ratepayers? Yes, it could. But I think that that's a decision as we get closer to, you know, the kind of March twenty-six area as final design approaches, that's going to be something that we will put forth to this council for, for your direction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless there's any additional comments or questions, motion?
Move to approve. Number twenty-two on the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Item number twenty-three. Authorizing the annexation of three six zero five ninth street, APN one two seven zero two five zero zero nine into the Community Facilities District number three, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting the levy of a special tax to qualified electors. Second resolution, declaring the results of a special annexation landowner elections, determining fidelity of the prior proceedings and directing the recording of the first amendment to notice of special tax lien. Third ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Series introducing a waiving of the first reading of authorizing the levying of special taxes in Community Facilities District number three, including annexation number one. This is the time and place for the public hearing for the City of Series Community Facilities District number three, Public Services. Annexation number one, the hearing is to inquire into the annexation of the property into the district and the levy of special taxes for public services within the adjacent up to the district. Before I formally open up the hearing, are there any property owners of the registered voters in the district of the territory to be annexed who wished to file written protests? If so, this must be filed with the city clerk now. Is there any written protest here today? You receive any emails? They have to be in person or?
There were no protests received.
Okay, thank you very much. The hearing is now open. We will first have presentations by staff about the annexation of the territory to the district. After that, we'll receive comments and questions and any oral protests from any interest persons when all the comments have been received and the hearing will be closed. Community Development Director? You will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Leah Simbala, Community Development Director. I just wanted to give a brief history of what a CFD is. Previously canceled, identified the need for a financing mechanism for maintenance and services and improvements related to new development. The way you do that is you annex property into CFDs. Typically, properties are annexed when there's a single property owner. So you may approve a subdivision map. Prior to those lots officially being subdivided, there's one property owner. At that time, we request that property owner to annex into a CFD. Because if you wait until all of those properties are subdivided, you may be dealing with two hundred, three hundred, four hundred different property owners who can protest their annexation into a CFD. To avoid that process, we typically do that when there's still a single property owner. In this instance, Jorge Hernandez is the single property owner of thirty-six oh five ninth street, which there's an approved parcel map to subdivide the property into two parcels. Rather than have to contend with two voters, we ask that this property annex into the CFD prior to the recordation of a final map. So that is this process. It is a three step process. First, you have, we had a part one hearing on May thirteenth where you adopted a resolution declaring the intent to annex. Once we've declared that intent, you have to then authorize staff to authorize the annexation into the CFD, authorize the levy, then you have another resolution that declares the results of the annexation, which our clerk will get into. And then finally, you have an ordinance that authorizes us to levy the tax and put it on the tax rolls. So then in the future, those two properties will produce a tax base of about two thousand four hundred and two dollars, which then comes back to the city for the purposes of public safety, fire prevention, police protection. It's basically additional way that the city can raise funds for needed services. And we do it at the beginning of the process to make it as simple as possible. No more detailed explanation. We do have our consultant, Nick Dehoff, on Zoom and he, with our consultant.
Thank you, Leah. I appreciate it. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Did we receive any emails?
There were no emails received.
Okay. The hearing is now closed. We may now consider to adopt the resolution authorizing annexation of the territory into Community Facilities District, authorizing the levy of special tax, submitting the levy of a special tax, qualified electors. Is there any comments or questions by the council? I do see several buttons that are pressed. We'll start off with Councilmember Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question is this, if the property was already annexed and the value of the home, would it be greater than they are now? Because it's, the homes are being built, have already been built and they're in the county. Does the assessed value? If it was a house?
I understand the question. So I just want to clarify, annexation doesn't mean from county into city? There's properties already in the city. We're using the term annexation to mean inside the CFD versus outside the CFD. So typically, properties in the older part of town are not in the CFD. We haven't annexed them into. So we're not dealing with the traditional word of annexation or less inside or outside of the county. It's in the city. Annexed into the CFD, which doesn't change the property value is what it's going to be. We're not, there's not a difference. You're not talking about county.
So there'd be an annex into these special districts? Thank you, Brett.
Okay, Councilmember Vera?
I just want to confirm, and I believe the parties may be here in the seating or in the dais. But I just want to confirm that they were notified, all parties were notified of it, like we just relied on one form of contact. So they were aware of these, of this process and they vote tonight.
Yes, we've been in contact with the property owner. He was sent certified mail, his ballot, he returned it. He's had, been in contact via email. I've emailed him, the consultants emailed him. There's only one person to contact as it relates to this item and
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Malakis, you said that you provided a parcel map in your presentation. I've been looking through and I don't have one in my
Not in my presentation. It was previously approved. It came to you prior. I don't know the exact date, but part of the condition of that approval was that they annex into the CFD prior to recording the final map. So this map wasn't part of this item. It was done previous to this item coming.
Thank you.
Is there any additional comments or questions? I just want to note to the council that each item must be voted on individually.
Move to approve number twenty-three, just the thirty-six oh five ninth street portion of that resolution.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silvera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please announce the results of the property owner vote?
We received one ballot vote. Property owner has voted no for the annexation. So with that said, the qualified landowner votes is one. Votes casted is one. Votes yes is zero. And votes no is one. Perhaps you want to verify? Leah? Consultant? On Zoom, I just Nick, are you available to? I mean, I think I know what the next step would be. I'd like our consultant to weigh in, but essentially if Mr.
Hello, this is Nick. I'm here.
Okay, Nick, so you tell our council the next steps on a no vote. I mean, from a development perspective, at this time, he's not complying with his conditions of approval and we would prevent the finaling of his parcel map. So I would like, maybe you have a more truthful answer.
Yeah, that's correct. So it looks like the property owner has voted in opposition of the measure, which is certainly unexpected. The property owner was made aware of the entire process, the conditions of approval to mitigate any negative financial impacts that this project may have. In this case, it was, the condition was going to be satisfied by annexing to this CFD in particular. Perhaps there was a miscommunication between the city and me and the property owner. But we were anticipating the property owner to vote in favor of this measure. Therefore, we are going to have to get back in touch with the property owner and potentially restart the process all over again. And I would like to point out that the city, as this is a condition of approval for the project, the city should not approve the property owner's project at this point until they have successfully annexed to the CFD.
I'd just like to give a little background and Nick fill it in where I have holes to. I would like to explain to the council the reason that we do this and maybe the property owner was unaware or didn't understand the implications. When you construct housing, essentially housing drains the city of general funds without a way to replenish it. The state or the act that established Community Facility District noted that. We live in California, Prop thirteen, you can't raise property taxes. So a way to combat that, this was to create community facility districts as a way to generate funds for much needed police and fire services that tend to be, not have a way to generate those funds without passing bonds or measures or things like that. So a CFD is a very beneficial tool for the cities. And it's not uncommon for new development to be able to essentially pay their way. They have to join these CFDs when you don't have some sort of development agreement that says you're going to get bonus bucks on the construction of each home. The city needs a way to generate funds. This is a very beneficial tool for cities. It's used everywhere. So I don't know if this property owner didn't understand why that condition was placed on his parcel map, but we will continue to place these conditions on development. It helps the city counteract that loss that residential development causes. So just so you know, we thought that the So just so you know, we thought that the property owner understood that.
Is he here today?
I don't. But Jorge Hernandez. We'll have to reach back out to him, but we won't remove that condition from his map. We, that's an expectation we staff have, and it's important for our fiscal health, have these new developments annexed into CFD. Own a fiscal.
Okay. I have Vice Mayor who has pressed his button. What, sir?
Yeah, excuse my ignorance on the process, but it just seems like we would have liked to have seen that vote before we voted on that resolution. Maybe in my opinion, it seems like there's more work to be done before we got to that point. And if I'm completely off base, please feel free to correct me.
So one, one quick interjection on that. Because this vote has to happen this way, you have to call for the election, and all the lead-up time for the noticing, it has to happen at the meeting, and it has to be open in public. So that's part of the process. So the outcome is the outcome, but that's, that's the process.
And this gentleman signed for the first step. So this is part two of this rather arduous process. But he had to sign a form that, and it was part of your packet the last time, that he was agreeing to go through this process. So I don't know if this was an error. Is, to your point, did we vet this with him? Yes, it was clear based on what he submitted for the last item on May 13th that he knew that this was A, a condition, and B, that it needed to happen. So I don't know what occurred. He hasn't been super communicative, but he sent his ballot back. And to, maybe to give another example, in parts of the city that weren't annexed, you have to have, you bring it to a vote to the public. So it's supposed to be a very democratic process. In theory, if it's an older neighborhood, we do, we do, they call it a petition into the CFD. We could be asking, you know, 40, 50, 60 people, do you, will you let us assess this tax levy on you? And we have to do it democratically. People can vote yes, people can vote no. So we can't, we can't know ahead of time, or we've taken away, you know, the, the process away from them by kind of fixing the vote, if you will. So it has to be fielded, and it has to be open at the meeting. And in a larger context, when you have a lot of people, that makes sense. One voter.
My question is, did it have to be opened after we could vote it on the resolution? Thank you.
Councilmember Vera?
Just from the comments that I'm hearing, was the, everything communicated in a language in which they understood?
I don't know. He seems, they were, it's written in English. No one, no one was told otherwise that he'd been on.
There was no language.
They managed to process an entitlement application in English, and the hearing was in English. So the staff reports were in English. So I'm going to go ahead and say there wasn't a language barrier, but I don't know that 100%.
I just want to double check, because I do know that a lot of times even just in planning, they come in with someone to translate or help them. So with this, I don't know if they were, if everything was communicated in a preferred language to a point that they were fully aware of the situation and the consequences.
So to that point, Councilmember Vera, if this item does make its way back to the council, a big, it's an if. If it makes its way back to the council, we'll ensure at a staff level that that specific issue is addressed and to make sure that there isn't any type of language barrier. Because I would venture to say we're a little confused as to the outcome considering the property owner's agreement up until now. And so it's possible, maybe there was. And so we'll make sure that that's not an issue if this hits the dais again.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there any additional comments or questions from council? Okay.
Based off of the election results, I don't believe that there's any additional action to be taken tonight, but we should confirm with our consultant if there's any affirmative action that we need from the council.
I don't need to say that the records show that there's a, they did not?
The city clerk has put on the record the no vote.
That is correct. So the next resolution is to declare the results of the special annexation?
It is, but it has language in there that directs as if it was actually going to get passed. So that's why I want to make sure if we can check with our consultant that there's no further action that can be taken tonight, because I don't think there is.
Yeah, that is correct. There is definitely language in that next resolution anticipating that the vote would be in favor. So I would recommend that no further action be taken at this time. That includes the second resolution before you and the ordinance that was supposed to come after that.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. There was no further action to be, to happen in regards to the next two resolutions. This item will be paused until we can further discuss whether or not there were some miscommunications. Yes, clerk, you have a comment?
Just to clarify, perhaps, Nubia, you can answer this question. The previous resolution authorizing, authorizing the annexation of the property, will that resolution still stand? Or will that be null and void?
That resolution was duly adopted. However, we're going to have to redo the process over again from the petition phase, which was way back before the resolution of intention. So we'll, there'll have to be another two council meetings in order for this to get processed correctly.
The, the resolution that was just approved in and of itself doesn't do anything unless it's all approved together. So this, this is approved, but it's, it has no effect. It will have no effect.
So, yeah, okay. Mr. Casey, I believe you have your button pressed.
All right, just for clarification, this property that the annexation was being these, does this property already have water and sewer surface?
It's a vacant parcel right now. There's nothing on.
Thank you.
Okay, so no further action is required or needed. So we will move on. Thank you very much, everyone. Mr. Martinez, I'm sorry, your break is, okay, you're just getting ready? Okay. Discussion items, none. Councilmember referrals? Mr. Martinez, is that you, sir? For a referral?
Sorry, no referrals, no.
No, you just look. Okay, any, any council referrals? No? Okay, now we'll move on to reports. I have nothing to report. City council members report. I'll go ahead and with Mr. Martinez first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is our fourth concert in the park. It's going to be Got Your Country, sponsored by Vic Strohs. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Joey and his department. They did a wonderful job with the Skies the Limit, the second annual. You know, they were there bright and early, setting up, getting parking, taking care of everything, making sure the event went off. I know the wind was, wasn't something that we can control. We did have one balloon take off. They took some of the contest winners from the high school. All in all, it looked like a great event. A lot of people came through, so I'm very excited for that to continue. So just wanted to make sure I thanked Joey for that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera?
I'm going through our supports. Housing, it looks like Tuscany Village, it looks like we've had some motion or movement with it a little bit. I know everything's being moved through the courts. So again, we're kind of having to wait on them regarding the next step. But I have been in contact with several developers who are interested in the property. Some have even proposed some offers. So I'm hoping the court will make a decision on their next steps pretty soon. With that, we're also meeting with some developers with possible low-income and affordable housing, as well as some other housing in West Landing. So I'm hoping with these additional meetings scheduled, with West Landing, we can actually see some housing developments going up over on the west side of Series. And I will continue to make contact and look forward to the next steps in making that happen with the help of staff, of course. In regards, I want to just kind of concur with Daniel Martinez regarding the upcoming Got Your Country, and I hope to see everyone out there dancing. And I was out there last week dancing, and I look forward to having a new group of crowd out there with me this week. This last Saturday, we actually had the garden club did a plant swap here in town. They do meet monthly, and they are actually going to have a new members luncheon in August. So they are, have a fairly decent membership. And then we look forward for those of you who are into gardening and join the Series Gardening Club. In regards to affordability, I know Juan Alanis, I know Assembly Member's got a representative here, that they will be doing a town hall here in July 9th, here at the community center at 6:00 PM. There'll be a variety of speakers here to discuss affordability in the valley. And I appreciate him actually making his commitment to me back in April when I was in Sacramento. I was talking to him about affordable housing and even just affordability overall in Series. And he promised me he would do a town hall, and he actually followed up on it. So I'm really glad he was able to do that with me. This last week, I also met with Eye on Modesto and did a podcast. We're going to be doing a series. They're working on a series regarding homelessness, just discussing some of the causes, solutions, and the costs associated as well. And we're just discussing some of the conditions that we're also seeing. We currently do have the care program that's still coming through weekly and addressing and working with the homeless that we do have in town. And I appreciate the efforts by our police department in coordinating with the care staff. Just that way they can go out and at least help them, and those who are ready to seek help are ready to take the next step. So please know that we do have staff or police and code enforcement are working with them so they can get the resources when they're ready for the resources. And again, it does take approximately about 40 visits from what they've been relaying to me before they're willing to take the next step. So they just have to build the trust in the system before they're willing to go. But if we can just help one person, I, I'm very thankful for the program because just helping one person is worth it, and it's offered free to the city. So there's no charge for the care team to actually come out. And I think that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so we've had the good fortune for many, many years of having Chief Kevin Wise in Series a couple different times. And I just want to, in advance, congratulate Mr. Wise. Tomorrow, he will be sworn in at 10 o'clock in the morning as the chief for Modesto City Fire, who we are in a great contract with. So congratulations, Kevin.
Martinez, you pressed your button against her.
Yes, thank you. I did forget one more. Thursday, July 4th, the City of Series is partnering with South Modesto Business United. They're going to be doing a Fourth of July Drone Firework Show at Almatito at the flea market. It starts at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, goes till 11:00. I'm looking forward to attending, but it will be all drones instead of fireworks. So just wanted to make sure that you're aware, the city did partner with them, and that looks like it's going to be a fun event.
Thank you very much. City manager?
I have nothing to report, sir.
City attorney?
Need to report tonight.
Department heads? Chief?
I have one thing. Tomorrow at 9 o'clock in the morning, right here in front of the community center, we're doing a fundraiser run, 5K run for Special Olympics. So if anybody's out and wants to be a part of a run or donate to Special Olympics Northern California, tomorrow, 9 o'clock in front of the community center.
Thank you very much, chief. Just double checking if there's any other department heads. Seeing none, doesn't look like our county supervisor here today. He was busy somewhere else. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now adjourn this meeting and go into a closed session for a conference regarding labor negotiators. California Government Code 54957.6. Agency designated representatives are City Manager Douglas D. Dunford and the Human Resources Director, Lada Vasquez. Employer Organizations are Series Police Officers Association. First-line supervisors, Confidential Bargaining Group, Laborers and International Union of the North American Launa, Mid-Managers Bargaining Group, Bargaining Group, and the Public Safety Managers. In addition to a conference with Legal Counsel for Participation Litigation, California Government Code 54956.9 and 2 for the potential case. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in regard to this closed session item? Okay, I will return. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much. I know it's only been hour and a half.
Welcome back everyone, direction has been provided to staff.
For both items?
For both items, yes.